Next up, we have a roll call. Would you please sign in? Hold on one second. Hold on one second. Start voting, please. Holly?
All councilors present, with Councilor Greigle previously requesting to be excused, an acquorum has been declared.
Thank you. Next up, we have the agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Holly?
No.
Not the chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing Mr. Greigle.
I've got a motion. Is there a second?
I will second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. Tonight, I have one card. That is Julie Mordecai. Julie, please approach podium. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Julie Mordecai, 12 Cottonwood Place, Alamosa, Colorado. Gentlemen and ladies, should we clap? I'm so excited to see all of you here. This is the, I'm here today to talk to you a little bit, just kind of an update on the Rio Grande Healthy Living Park, but also to let you know about a funding opportunity that we would be the fiscal agent for, but support some of the things that you're doing. So, just so you know, the park's scheduled to close in February, depending on if all the easements and everything else go through, and then we'll own the property. And we're really excited about that. And then in the middle of that, on top of all that, we're part of the Inspire Initiative. I know you know about that. We received a close to $100,000 grant to plan, and then there'll be $5 million to spend in the San Luis Valley on various projects to get kids outside. Additionally, through that project, we're trying to think about how we're going to really get kids from seven minutes a day outside to more time. And one of our initiatives that we'll want to talk to you about later, but to think about, is we'd like to do a book that's going to be statewide, and we want our mayors and our governors and our city council and our librarians to pick this book. And it's called Last Child in the Woods, and it's a great book, and so if any of you get a chance to read it, it tells a lot about this story. I talked to Heather about that. We appreciate everything that your staff has been doing to collaborate with us, and one of the things that we're looking at is this, Colorado Health has a grant that can be written up to $100,000. It's called Activating Places and Spaces Together. In this funding opportunity, we looked at, it has to be sort of a geographical space. And I'm writing a grant for the Rio Grande Corridor. So, we'd love to participate with you on Cole Park, anything along, the trail system along the river, anything that has, on the golf course that isn't happening right now, maybe stronger system for cross-country skiing or snowshoeing if there's snow outside. And so, and our partners that we've been talking to are you and the San Juan Norda Club, possibly, some running groups, boys and girls clubs, pals, Alamosa Live Music Association. We'd like to extend their season in the park. Adams State Adventure Program, we'd like to do more with them on the river. And there's a new program, well, it's not a program, it's a program, Walk to Connect, which is a program in Denver, a friend of mine started, where people walk on trails and connect. And they set up these different kinds of walks. Some of them are environmental, some of them they're talking about the current water issues, or they're just walking to make friends. Is that my time's up?
That's your time.
Okay.
That's your time, Julie.
So, we'd like you to support that grant.
And so, for council information, Julie has talked to us, both Hines and Andy and then myself. It's a grant that we don't technically have to be a partner in, it's one they're eligible to apply for, they don't need us for our fiscal agent. It might make it stronger by bringing in other partnerships, obviously, but we're appreciative of them thinking of us and writing it in a way that can benefit the area. So, I wanted Julie just to come tonight so she can inform you of the grant and what was going on, and if you had any questions, she'd be the person to ask.
Thank you. Heather, council, do we have any questions of Julie? Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Julie, for thinking of us. I think you always do such neat stuff, so thank you for that. I'm wondering when the grant is due and when then the funding would start coming in?
It's due on February 15th, and I don't know when it's coming in. And the amounts are ranging between 25 and 100,000, and we're probably going to write, probably between 50 and 100,000. Yeah.
Councilor Hansley?
Is it a pretty competitive grant?
Well, they love us right now.
Okay.
So, I think it's competitive, but you also have to know that the Inspire Initiative, which was written with some of these same concepts, was rated number one in the state.
Wow.
Yeah. So, this kind of plays off of it. They're all talking to each other, so Colorado Health is looking at what GOCO's doing, and so they're saying, hey, how can we support that? And then more and more foundations are going to be doing this, so we're going to find more and more opportunities because we were involved with this. It's pretty exciting.
Awesome job. Thanks.
Councilor ViHill?
Thank you, Mayor. This question is for Heather. If we decided to support this grant, would we need a motion, or how would we go about doing that?
My impression, since we're not obligating anything financially, and they're going to write the grant and manage the grants, not really even going to take any staff time, we're just being invited to participate, so I think it was more informational. If you want to make a motion, that's fine, but I don't think it's required.
Thank you, Julie, so much for being here this evening and for sharing that information with us. I think you have full support of council on this, so if there's anything we can do, you and Heather can get together and we'll be part of that as well.
We just would love for you to put some things that you want to get done into the budget, and we'll pay for it. That's our hope, if we get the grant, so.
Well, I can see the smile on Heather's face, so I'm sure that'll happen. Thank you, Julie.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Consent Calendar A. The consent calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have four items. The Ward of Quote for a Teckyel Sand System. Approve the minutes of the meeting of January 6, 2016. Receive December 2015 expenditure report. And receive the December 2015 monthly reports. Any questions, council? Councilor ViHill?
If there's no discussion or questions, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I've got a motion and a second on Consent Calendar A. There any other discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. And we'll move on to regular business, business brought forward by city staff. Tonight, we have two items by Public Works. We have a motion accepting six easements from the Trust for Public Land, accepting a proposed memorandum of understanding for their maintenance, and authorizing the mayor to sign the easement agreement and memorandum of understanding on behalf of the city, once the city attorney is satisfied that the exhibits to the agreement setting forth the easement descriptions have been appropriately amended, and a public hearing and second reading on Ordinance Number 1-2016, and ordinance approving the annexation of the 2016 Regina Kasek Annexation Petition for the annexation of a tract of land located in the southeast corridor of Section 9 Township 37, North Range 10, East New Mexico Principal Meridian, Alamosa County, Colorado. Is that you? This is Eric. Thank you, Eric.
It was dropped to me as the person most involved in drafting the easement agreement to deal with this, but it was an involvement of almost the entire city staff, working together with the folks from the Healthy Living Park and the Trust for Public Lands to put in place an agreement that will allow for public recreational access along the dikes and some of the trails on and across the old Polston property. So, I've put up on the screen one of the items that is in the information packet that shows where these easements are. Easement 1 is a small little chunk of recreational easement along the dike that runs just for this little piece. Let me just back up and say, the city has already easements for the dikes. So, the city, in conjunction with the construction of the dikes and the Army Corps of Engineers, acquired easements for the existence of the dikes, the existence and maintenance for dike integrity purposes of the dikes. The public has been using those dikes for many, many years as recreational trails as well. The city does not have easements that allow that type of use, so the easements for the dikes that are pre-existing do not encompass recreational use. That's just something that has happened. If you look down here at the bottom of the image, you see that's the footbridge across the Rio Grande from Cole Park. So, what the Healthy Living Park has done is agreed to grant easements for recreational use by the public along these dikes. That would be easement 1, easement 2, and easement 5. And also to formalize an existing easement that the city did have across Polston property for a jogging/walking path. That's easement 6 that comes down in this triangular shape. That easement that the city has on paper already did not line up on paper with what was on the ground. It was close, but it wasn't complete, so this takes care of getting that alignment corrected. And then there are already underground utilities, I think primarily water and sewer, there may be electric, but I believe it's water, it's actually just water lines, along easement 3 and easement 4, that we at least can't find any public, or any record in the public records for formal recognition of those easements. So, this easement agreement deals with these six easements primarily, the primary focus is the walking and trails easement along the dikes. In conjunction with that, there is, and I'll just pull up the plat overview, there is a survey that shows where the easements are. There will be a description of each of these easements. There needs to be some adjustment to the survey descriptions. There were some easements included down here along, right after the Cole Park footbridge that are not on Healthy Living Park land, they're actually on land owned by another party, so we took those out. We need to renumber things and re-describe some things. So, that's the portion of your proposed motion that says, once the city's attorney is satisfied, that the easement descriptions have been appropriately amended. That's the amendment we're looking at. It's really just cleanup stuff for numbering. The easement agreement itself is pretty straightforward. It's a grant of the easements as I've described them. One of the features of it is that the Healthy Living Park is interested in doing organic farming on their property, and part of the requirements for organic farming to meet the certifications required by the National Organic Program, you cannot have pesticides, chemical pesticides being used. And so, the city, as part of this easement agreement, will be agreeing that it will maintain the, really the top of the dike, and however far down a mower can reach, it will maintain the easements by mechanical or organic compatible means. We won't be spraying chemicals to do weed control out there, in recognition of the organic farming that the Healthy Living Park wants to do. And that is true for all of the maintenance of the easements that were being granted by the Healthy Living Park. Now, for the existing easements that we have, we already have the right to maintain those for dike integrity purposes. So, we have agreed in this agreement that we will do our best to do whatever maintenance we need to do for those easements as well by organic means, but if push comes to shove, and we've got to do something that isn't organic, we can do that for dike maintenance purposes. I think that's pretty much the agreement in a nutshell. There is a separate memorandum of understanding that will be entered into, that specifies some of the details of that maintenance. One of the things that also this easement agreement gets into, let me see if it's, I don't, I don't know whether I put it on the information sheet, is an agreement about maintaining a drainage easement that the city has for water accruing off of the ranch and running down onto Healthy Living Park property before going back into the river in a pipe through the dike. So, we've got an agreement that the city will continue to maintain that dike structure, drainage structure as it has. The Healthy Living Park will be able to adjust the levels of water that are in that drainage pond however it wants. The city doesn't really care about what those levels look like. We just need to make sure that the integrity of the drainage as it goes from the drainage easement back to the river is maintained. So, we're undertaking to do that, and we are undertaking to maintain, out beyond the strict boundaries of the easement, we will do mowing of the dikes, sort of down the edge of the dike, down the dike slope, as far as one of our mower passes will reach. So, we'll try to keep everything under control along those walking paths, and that's what the maintenance memorandum of understanding is about.
So, in short, this gives us some easements that, especially from the public use, we didn't have in place, and that's how the trails were being used, and so I think those are very important. It also sets and corrects the easements for some of the infrastructure we had in place and cleans that up, as well as matching up the other easements. So, it's a lot of cleanup. It gives us the type of use from a public perspective that we've wanted and fills in some of those critical areas. I think part of the reason, we started these discussions a few months ago, but the more we looked at the different ownership and the property and what easements we thought we had and didn't have, and trying to clean that up, it just took a little while. So, I think the discussions have been positive. There's an understanding of what they want to accomplish on the organic side, and there's an understanding of what, you know, we have to do from a responsibility for the FEMA certification and that. And so, as long as we're just working well together and understanding each other's needs, it seems pretty reasonable, so.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Heather. We have any questions of Eric or Heather concerning the six easements? We have four recreational easements and two easements that are specifically outlined to be for...
Currently, water lines, but utilities in general.
Water lines, yeah. Okay. Anyone? I'd like to make a comment. This council is witnessing a dream fulfilled, a vision for the city and our citizens that has endured much controversy and time. Through the endless meetings and dedicated position of the elected officials and the great gift of the Trust for Public Lands, the trail and utility easements will be realized at little or no cost. As beneficiaries of this, generations of Alamosa citizens as well as visitors will be able to more fully enjoy the vast recreational opportunities available by this action. As stewards of our citizens' trust, I am proud that cooperation, dedication, and mutual respect for open space, cultural diversity, and the need for growing our own food is becoming more of a reality and not just a fad. Our local food coalition has also been instrumental in this common cause. Our commitment as an elected body to improving the quality of life in Alamosa is greatly enhanced by this most important step forward. Thank you. Councilor ViHill?
Mayor, that's hard to follow. But I totally agree, and I would like to thank Trust for Public Lands and our staff for working together and securing these trails, these easements for our community. Long before I've ever been here, they, people have used those trails, will continue to use the trails. It's a highlight of our community, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilor Coleman?
I just want to follow up and just say thank you to Healthy Living Park and the Trust for Public Lands for choosing to convey the easements to the city at no cost, and the trails are a welcoming benefit for our citizens, so thank you. It's greatly appreciated.
Councilor Stefano, did you have something to say?
I was going to make a motion that we accept these six easements.
And there's a proposed memorandum of understanding that the mayor has to sign both of them. Do you want to include that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilor ViHill?
Well, that suffice. Second?
I've got a motion and a second on accepting the six easements from the Trust for Public Lands, as well as accepting a proposed memorandum of understanding, and obviously, all the rest of this as well. Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have the public hearing and second reading on Ordinance Number 1-2016. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. This is the final reading and the public hearing for Ordinance 1-2016 for the Regina Kasek Annexation. If you remember, this property is an enclave located between West 10th and West 11th Streets, west of Highway 285 at the southern terminus of Monroe Avenue Extended. It's an enclave, which is an area of unincorporated territory completely surrounded by city limits. They're created when property is annexed in a patchwork pattern, as has been customary in Alamosa. This condition can cause problems for the city and neighboring properties. The city has no control over land use or zoning in an enclave. People in and around the enclaves can become confused as to whether the city or county is responsible for services, and taxpayers must help subsidize what can at times be elevated costs for those services. The subject property has city water and sewer available and is accessed by a paved street to the north, and it's not currently accessible from the south.
Thank you, Pat. Counsel, any questions of Pat? And with that, I will open the public hearing on Ordinance Number 1-2016. All those in favor of, in favor of the ordinance or against the ordinance, please approach the podium and state your wishes. Mr. McCann? Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you for having me, sir. Dan McCann, 1809 Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. It's really good you're doing this kind of stuff, so the city knows what's the city, and city employees don't get into trouble. They know we own it or we don't own it. And let's face it, a lot of cities started out this way. There were mishmashes, and, you know, as you come in to different communities, you'll see signs, especially in the valley, saying, this is zoned, and we've had a situation out east of town, you know? And people come there, and they're not sure they belong there, and they think they're squatters and stuff, and it makes more of a civilized situation. But if you've got areas like that, and there's nothing, nothing out there, do what you can to help those people out, you know? We're not all born with a silver spoon in their mouth like I was, but I helped create it, okay? I worked in a semi-line at 12. I helped create the McCann wealth. Anyway, this is a good thing, and it's going to make the city better.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Anyone else would like to speak on Ordinance Number 1-2016? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to council for a decision or further discussion. Councilor Stefano?
Mayor, I've made motions on this ordinance a couple of times already, and I move that we accept Ordinance Number 2-2016.
I second it.
And just a quick correction, it's Ordinance Number 1-2016.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the public, on the, on Ordinance Number 1-2016? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, council. We'll move on to finance. A public hearing and second reading on Ordinance Number 2-2016, an ordinance amending in part the established pay plan for city officers and employees, as referred to in Section 15-2 of the Code of Ordinances, concerning personnel rules and regulations and pay plan for city officers and employees. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you, sir. This is our Number 2 ordinance with the 2016 pay plan that is more of a housekeeping item. As summary, this includes mostly the Parks and Rec employees that were not previously put in and had been identified as part of the classifications that we are needing to put into our current pay plan.
Thank you, Amanda. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments for Amanda? Thank you, Amanda. With that, I will open the public hearing and second reading on Ordinance Number 20- I mean, sorry, 2-2016. All those wishing to address council on this issue, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on Ordinance Number 20, I mean, 2-2016, and bring it to council for further discussion or a motion. Councilor Daniel?
Mayor, I would motion that we approve Ordinance Number 2-2016, amending the pay plan for city employees.
I second it.
I've got a motion and a second on Ordinance Number 2-2016. Is there any further discussion? Counselors, seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have a first reading on Ordinance Number 5-2016, and an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement amongst the municipal fire departments and fire protection districts in the San Luis Valley for the provision of mutual aid. Thank you, Chief, for being here.
This is basically updating a version of the intergovernmental agreement, mutual aid agreement that's already in place. We periodically, all the agencies in the valley take a look at it, see what needs to change over the course of time. This was triggered basically by Del Norte and South Fork separating into two separate districts, and then Eric did a little bit of cleanup for us on the language. The intergovernmental, the intergovernmental agreement, mutual aid agreement, covers who's in charge when we rely on other agencies to come in and help us, or vice versa, if we go to their agency to help us. Covers all the legal aspects and also the financial responsibilities, so the agreement's been in place as long as I've been on the department, so it's probably 35, 40 years since the original one was struck within the valley.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, we have any questions of the chief?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Chief, it's really great to see the different towns coming together to fight fires as a team. as a team. I had a chance to witness a fire earlier, I mean, the latter part of last year, when you and your team and other crews were out there, and it was just amazing to see how you all came together as a team and worked together to put the fire out in that particular home. So, I'm really proud to see that there is an intergovernmental agreement in place to where towns can work together for the safety and protection of the citizens in the San Luis Valley, and I just want you to know that we appreciate that.
Yeah, we appreciate that, too, and it's definitely vital because none of us can do it by ourselves, so we've got to have it.
Thank you, Counsel Coleman. I think we all agree with you on that.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have a first reading on that. We need to set it for a public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve upon first reading ordinance five dash 2016 and set it for a public hearing on February 3rd at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second on ordinance number five dash 2016. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Start voting, please. I've got one abstention. Holly?
Um, the motion carried. Counselor Stefano, did you mean to abstain, or did you mean to?
I voted yes.
Vote yes. Okay. Then if you voted yes, the motion carried unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Carries unanimously? Thank you. Next up, we have City Manager slash Legal. We have a public hearing regarding potential CDBG application for the SLV Health expansion of oncology infrastructure. Heather, or Heather? Thank you.
So, we do have a contingency here from SLV Health, and as they make their way up, I'll give a little bit of an introduction. They will have a lot more information on this specific project, but in regards from a city perspective, the CDBG is Community Development Block Grant. That is federal funding. Part of the reason that SLV Health wanted to approach the city from a partnership perspective is municipalities or local governments are the entities that are eligible. CDBG grants can be a lot more challenging to manage since they are federal funds. There's a lot of hoops to jump through. Thankfully, they've had some very recent CDBG grants that they've been working on in some other counties, so there are staff that have some experience there, and Amanda has been part of the process the last time we partnered with an outside agency for a CDBG grant, and so we have some experience on the staff side as well. So, the mayor had raised a question previous in the week in regards to if we have a resolution or an ordinance that requires us to withhold any money to manage the grant. There is not an ordinance, there is not a resolution. I know that it's very likely council's probably discussed that item in the past. Talking to Amanda, we've always done it kind of on a case-by-case basis. If we're playing a very large role in it, then we would want to look at something like this. With our discussions of SLV Health, it has been focused that they will be providing the grant application and the grant management. We will need to be involved to make sure, since it's under our name, that everything's being met appropriately, but that's very minimal work compared to managing the grant and keeping on top of that. So, at this point, we wouldn't recommend that we would need anything. The only other potential cost was it will kick us into the single audit, which we estimate around 8,000. The discussions have indicated that they would cover that cost to make sure that there's not a cost to the city. And from a city perspective, it's a very exciting project. It's, we draw a lot of people to the hospital. There's a lot of people from outside the city that base their opinions when they're coming to the hospital, and it's, it's bookend by 160, which obviously has a lot of travelers, but then also First Street, which sees a lot of other travelers. And as you know, First Street is set for the design in 2016, and it's, as in major arterial, we, we've got some big plans for it. So, the timing of this is, is very positive as well to make sure we don't have two things kind of designing independently, but we can make sure they're complementing each other and, and we're getting the best output for the community. So, with that said, I want to turn it over for more of a project description from the contingency. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Heather, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. So, I'll start with introductions first off. This is John Thompson, who is our Director of Support Services at the hospital. Donna Weehy, who's our Director of Communications and Public Relations, and then I'm Chris Hedinger-Hunt, Director of Risk and Grant Management, 2601 Park Avenue. So, I'm going to start with a little bit of a background about what we do and our work with oncology services. And over the past decade, really, we've done a lot to develop those resources in the San Luis Valley. And where we started at was really developing our human capital, and we started with bringing in oncology specialists who just visited and provided visiting specialty services. And so, when it got to be at a point where we were scheduling those specialists eight days out of the month, we recognized the need that we needed to hire our own oncologist, which we did. In 2014, we hired Dr. Penny Cooper, and she's the San Luis Valley's only oncologist. And we hired her starting as a part-time provider, but her practice grew very quickly, and so she became a full-time provider. And then just this past summer in 2015, we brought on another provider, Doc, Lindsey Blankenship, who's a physician assistant to help in the practice. So, since they have started in our practice, and now we have a full team of people, so we've got the humans to provide the services, they have served 600 oncology patients in the San Luis Valley. And then we also provide chemotherapy and infusion services, and through those services, last year in 2015, we served 1,850 patients. So, and that doubled from the previous year, and it's just increasingly growing over the years. So, unfortunately, our current space configuration is that if you want to see the specialists and the providers, you have to go to our Stewart Street Clinic. But if you want chemotherapy and infusion, or radiology and laboratory, or any of the other ancillary services, those are over at the hospital. So, patients have to go to two separate locations, which is really difficult when you're not feeling well and when you're really ill, and it's an additional hardship for patients. So, for the last year, we've really been talking about what are our options to dedicate space for one stop for these patients. And what we came up with was an expansion to our current hospital space, and John's going to talk to you more about that, but what we learned about that was that when we do that, it's going to cause a need to do exterior work to our facility, our parking, our curbing, our sidewalks, the sewer, those kinds of things, that really aligns very nicely with some of the priorities that the city has. So, John's going to talk to you through that process.
John Thompson, County Road 102 South, Alamosa County. Thank you. We're using a site map up here, and what Donna passed out was a Google Map picture that we hoped would help you in the wayfinding and geographical orientation as we talk through this. On the site map, and I'll point to it, the dashed lines on the upper part of our hospital, this is the bump out that we're going to do with the oncology space. The bigger piece of that is the oncology space, and it, it's about 2,300 square foot. It's a 30-foot bump out from the existing face of the building, a one-story bump out. And then the other piece right above it, we recognize in doing that, we have to bump out the ambulance entrance at the same time, so that's not lost and difficult for people to find. So, that's the interior part of this project that we hope to grow and enhance our oncology services by combining the location, and it grows those services by 1,000 square feet. In meetings last week with city management, we discussed the effects of this on the rest of the, the parking and the rest of the campus, and some other plans we had for enhancing landscaping and things like that. While they shared with us the First Street plans, and we were looking and discussing the synergy along that, and we presented at that time, right here at Second Street, where I'm pointing, if you go up to First, that's a continuation of what would be Blanca that goes through the interior of our parking out front for our patients and visitors. We would recommend, and we discussed removing that because of, this bump out's eliminating a number of parking spaces and requires some realignment of the rest of the spaces. So, the plan would be to remove that and pave over that to grow the parking in that area, but at the same time to move some entrances on Pike, a couple of them over there with probably a monument sign, and some enhanced landscaping up at that corner at First and Pike. The, if you're familiar with this area, this area that I'm pointing to here and on down on this west side of the parking lot is unimproved parking. It's dirt. It's been that way, I guess, for many years, and it's not particularly conducive particularly to visitors and patients. Some of our staff park over there. Part of the scope, we would include the paving of this and improving of that at the same time. And when we met last week, Pat also asked that we improve the storm sewer from the hospital and make improvements to it, and we would commit to that as part of this project. The next area, if you go down here along 160, which is the yellow lines, you see this area marked landscape. That's currently, the face of it that's along 160 is a dirt lot, has a split rail fence along it, unimproved, and frankly, not the most attractive or welcoming. And we've really been wanting to improve that for quite a while, and I think city management agreed with that. We'd like to take a 20 or 30-foot part of that, along that edge, and do some really attractive improved landscaping. We like what's done at the Federal Bank on Main Street. We like the, the big planters and the trees and that type of a style. We've, or would hope to do something like that. You may be familiar, the, the rest, or half of that lot is also dirt, unimproved. Used to be an old motel there. We would like to, again, improve that site, pave it. There's parking or pavement on the upper half of that. Half of that pavement is good and half is not. If you actually look close at that Google Map, it shows how bad some of that pavement is. I was surprised that that image would show that so bad. So, the scope that we would like to submit in this grant is just what I said. Removing this section of the interior road there, paving over that, improving storm sewer, creating a couple of inlets there at, on Pike, paving those dirt lots on the west, and then the improvements along 160 and the edge in landscape, as well as the dirt lots down there. So, any questions on the scope?
Well, before he does that, I just want to wrap up by asking why this is, or talking about why this is important. And one of the reasons is because before this, patients from the San Luis Valley had to travel outside of the San Luis Valley for cancer treatment and services. And so, we really want to provide those services close to home and strengthen our healthcare system in the San Luis Valley. The hospital is obviously one of the premier landmarks between Highway US 160 and First Street. This will simultaneously enhance your capital exterior improvements that you've got with municipal traffic flow, intersections, beautification, and all those things. So, our ask tonight is to sponsor the CDBG grant as the governmental agency. Our grant request will be $500,000. We expect that this will be right around $980,000. The hospital is going to commit to pay, cover for those costs that are not covered by the grant, and it will specifically include the audit fee that would be triggered by the grant application. We have to submit the grant February 4th, so that's right around the corner, and then we expect that we would hear on the grant award right around the spring, which is usually in May. And so, now we do, we will, happy to answer any questions and ask for your full consideration.
Counselor Veale?
Thank you, Mayor. I can only speak on behalf of myself, obviously, but I think this is a great project, and I would be in full support of sponsoring this, not only for beautifying the area, fixing the parking situation, but for the services that it will bring to the folks of the valley. And I really appreciate you all going out and looking for this.
Thank you. Counselor Coleman?
I want to thank you all very much for sharing this helpful information with us. You mentioned that the total project cost might be somewhere in the area of $900,000. What are your plans as far as using contractors? Are you going to be using local contractors to do the work that you have in your scope?
We would hope to. CDB grant does require competitive bidding, and for instance, the engineering design would be the first thing we'd go forward with, and I think there are two very qualified firms, if not more, here in Alamosa that would be very qualified to do this work. There's certainly a paving contractor locally, but I'm sure we'll receive bids from outside. But it is our hope to do as much of this locally as we can.
That's good. That's good. And I just want to make sure, did I hear you correctly when you said that the scope will increase the area square footage by about 1,000 square feet?
The total square foot of growth in oncology space will be 1,000 square foot. The bump out is 2,300, but that includes moving the clinic from Stewart Avenue to this location, but it's 1,000 new square feet for patient care.
And would, will that allow for new equipment and make it more efficient for?
We're in early design on that clinic, but it's taking exam spaces from six to 10 and plus some private ones. It greatly enhances the care that Dr. Cooper will be able to provide.
One of the other, other features I think that's really important is we really want to make it more patient and family-centered. So, within the clinic itself, there will be a multipurpose room where you can do some of those case conferencings and have family present, and some of the treatment bays are going to be front-facing, and then we want to also just do stuff that's much more aesthetically healing for patients in the center itself, so.
Okay, and I just have one final comment. I just want to thank you all so very much for investing in human capital by bringing in qualified specialists to provide a well-needed service here in the valley. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Henzley?
So, I, I also agree with what everyone has said. I have had a couple of friends of mine that I've gone with for cancer treatment, and it definitely is hard because we are going from one spot to the other. So, I think this is great and obviously well-needed. Also, obviously, at this point, parking is already an issue, let alone before we do this, so I think that's a great need as well. I have just a quick question. So, when you cut off Blanca Avenue, where you were pointing out, do you foresee any change in how traffic is going to be, or is it just us local people have to get used to going to it a different way? I mean Pike, I apologize. Pike.
There would still be an entrance on the south edge from Blanca. That would be one of the entrances to the visitor-patient parking. We anticipate one on this side and one up at the north.
Okay.
And so, I think there'll be ample entrances, and it will be a learning curve. We're anxious to work with an engineering design firm to create that flow and make it as friendly as possible.
And I'm not against that by any means. I was just more curious because definitely I'm very supportive of change, and I think this is a great, great plan, so thank you.
Counselor Stefano?
I want to thank you. It's a great, wonderful idea. I've had the pleasure of watching the hospital grow. As a painting contractor, I've been hired on many of the projects, the new surgery rooms, for example. It's, it's great to see the hospital growing and people taking more of a, a better outlook to SLV Health. We hear scuttlebutt all the time. I've heard, you know, I'd rather go to Pueblo than go to SLV Health. I had the, the pleasure and unpleasant of having surgery a while back, and the people that, that treated me in that surgery room were awesome. I mean, they, they were professional, they did a great job, and I really admire you guys for what you're doing, and I think it's a great opportunity to, to service the San Luis Valley instead of traveling out of town. And it, it's wonderful to see it grow and grow. Another question, what will happen to the Stewart? Another question, what will happen to the Stewart Clinic once you move this facility there?
We have a deficit of space, particularly in the clinical areas, and I think there's already a line of department directors queuing up to ask for that space, so. We haven't decided exactly yet what the oncology space would become, but it's sorely needed in that building.
Well, thank you for your hard work. It's a real wonderful project.
Thank you.
Counselor Daniel.
Thank you. I, I will echo what everyone said and just say, thank you very much for adding this space. My mother went through cancer treatments a few years ago. I know what it's like to be in uncomfortable cramped spaces. We didn't get them here and so I really appreciate, sorry, let me clarify, but I really do appreciate making it comfortable for patients and knowing the things that they're going through. And I also wanted to say administratively, I appreciate the support. I know of your capabilities in your grant writing and in your, able to, you're able to administer this grant, so I'm very comfortable with what the city manager and the staff have said about how it wouldn't cause an undue burden on the city staff, so thank you for that and being such a wonderful steward of these funds, so, good luck.
Thank you. I, I too would like to just reiterate what, what counsel has said. This is a wonderful opportunity to, to keep people that are ill in the valley. That's the most important part. I, I had a 47-year-old sister that died from cancer and she'd have to go to Pueblo all the time and if we wanted to follow her, we had to go there as well. And so taking the burden away from someone that's ill and going through an emotional and physical trauma like this is just so much better for them. And so I applaud you for that. Thank you for being here and I, I too support this project wholeheartedly. Just one quick question, Blanca Avenue evidently goes all the way through and then circles back over to First Street. Will that entrance into the property be maintained on Blanca Avenue along with the two that are going to be on Pike?
No, there won't be.
No, you're going, just going to close that off altogether?
Correct.
So the only entrances you're going to have are off of Pike Avenue?
It really helps alleviate the traffic in that ER and the confusion of cars coming out and they, if an ambulance is unloading, they have to stop and wait and it kind of causes a lot of traffic issues right there, so to alleviate that, that'll be great. And then as, as we look at our First Street design, we really want to push the walkers and the bikers on the other side away from the entrances and the ingresses and egresses that are for our ambulance use there. So we think that we'll just close that off and then it'll all be parking.
The other aspect of it is knowing we're getting ready to do the First Street design, we already know we've got that intersection that's kind of wonky over there and you've got a lot of traffic entering it from different places, plus you've got ASU with the housing and, and some of those other areas further down. So, you know, if we can get it to where it's clear for the traffic flow within here, it's probably good to eliminate some cars entering from it, from that location, entering some of the entrances into First Street would prob, would probably be good.
No, I, I can totally understand closing off First Street, but I didn't, I didn't know about closing off Blanca at Second. I guess that was my question.
We, we would keep that.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, that's.
Blanca at Second, yes.
Yes, we would need that.
Okay. Thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. All right.
Counselor Coleman.
Mayor, if there are no further questions or comments, I would like to make a motion authorizing the mayor to submit a CDBG grant application for the expansion of oncology infrastructure.
We probably need to open the public hearing first. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Jump the gun.
Thank you.
Thank you, co. We're just, I, I think we're excited about this project, Counselor Coleman, and so with that, I, I will over, open the public hearing on CDBG application for SLV health and we've had folks speak in favor of that. Is there anyone else in the audience willing to speak on this subject? Seeing none, I'll, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to counsel for more discussion or a, or a motion.
All right, I'll try again this time. Jumped the gun the first time. If there are no further questions or comments, I would like to make a motion authorizing the mayor to submit a CDBG grant application for the expansion of oncology infrastructure.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please.
The motion carried anonymously.
Thank you, counsel, and thank you for being here. Appreciate your presence.
Thank you very much.
Move on to a public hearing and second reading on ordinance number three dash 2016, allowing for marijuana testing facilities to operate in Alamosa's industrial zones. Heather?
Thank you. Counsel has voted once on this and so this would be the second vote with the public hearing. As a reminder, both for retail and marijuana, we have the ordinances that prohibit the sale of those activities. When we pass those, it also prohibited testing facilities. And part of what probably went into that is when this was coming before voters and before counsel, it was hard to anticipate what this marijuana stuff was going to look like once it became legal. And so as it's unfolded, both the federal and the state entities have identified a need for testing. If, if people are going to be consuming this, they want to make sure that the product is safe. And so we were approached and, and asked if it was, if it was allowed and that's when we realized that it, it was not. The ordinance that is before you allows it for industrially zoned areas. It's, it's not wide open. It doesn't open any other aspect of the marijuana. I know counsel's indicated some interest in maybe having a separate work session to talk about some of those bigger issues. This one would be entirely focused on just the testing. They would need to be licensed through the state and in an industrial zoned area. And with that, I'll let you, ask me questions or open the public hearing.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Heather? Counselor Stefano?
No.
Okay. Okay, well, let me open the public hearing then. Okay, and with that, I, I will open the, the public hearing on ordinance number three dash 2016, allowing for marijuana testing facilities to operate in Alamosa's industrial zone. Anyone in favor or opposed to this ordinance? Please step forward. Identify yourself and your address for the record, please. Mrs. Vehill?
Evelyn Vehill, 621st Street. And Ed Vehill would like to apologize for his absence tonight. The House and the Senate are now back in session and so as I speak to you tonight, he is in Denver. And Heather, thank you for that. But Mr. Mayor and honorable members of city council, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to be here for the second reading and I'm here to answer any questions that anybody, anybody might have on ordinance three dash 2016. Before I open it up for questions, I'd like to add that the board of directors have informed me that they heard from DEA last week. We submitted an application to DEA early December and February 20th, it'll be three months that they've had that application on their desk. We cannot move forward, they cannot move forward without the acceptance of an ordinance change and so after February 20th, then the application just gets trashed and we have to start all over again. So there is a time-sensitive issue here with making a change to the ordinance that has greatly impacted Sangre de Cristal laboratory. And I would just like to open it to questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, Evelyn.
Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. One question I have, ma'am, is where would this proposed laboratory be?
The testing for THC will, will be done at the existing laboratory located at 2329 Lavalane at the industrial park. The laboratory has been there for 22 years and that's where it'll take place.
Thank you.
Counselor Stefano.
Ms. Vehill, on this testing, it's for medical marijuana use, is that correct?
It's for medical marijuana, it's for commercial marijuana, it's for the sale of marijuana, it's for, for having the ability to be able to test it for the medical industry, for doctors who have concerns and issues with it, with the potency. It's for the testing of THC.
I just want to say at the beginning, when you came last, last time, last meeting, that I was kind of opposed to this because it wasn't because, it was because I didn't understand it. So now I've gotten a little more intact, up to speed on it and now I understand it a little better.
Okay.
Want to say that.
Thank you.
Evelyn, I have a quick question specific to the amount or the, the testing amount that is going to be allowed in your laboratory. In other words, when, when you get a marijuana sample, is there a specific quantity that you're going to accept and won't accept more than that or?
That's correct.
How, how, can you explain a little bit about that?
Yes, the, the amount of marijuana that will be accepted by the laboratory through chain of custody, through DEA, through the laboratory, Sangre de Cristal laboratory, will depend on the testing that's required. For example, if it's for the testing of herbicides and pesticides, then it's 1.2 grams. And if it's for fecal and E. coli and Salmonella, then it's a half a gram. We will weigh what we need and take only what we need for the testing and that's all. There won't be any waste of the product and if we need to repeat a test, we will call the client and have him bring more of the product in.
Which leads me to the second part of my question is if you have more than you need to test, what, what will be your, I guess, modus operandi to, to get rid of it? What is planned?
Well, that, that's just it. We're, we won't take more than we need for the specific tests required. Now with the situation with DEA, you know, when they bring in cocaine, when they do a drug bust and they bring it in, you know, the agents come in, we weigh out what they need for the specific test and then they give us enough to do a repeat test. Well, all of that, whatever is, it's documented what they left in, the rest of it goes into a secure safe and then the next time they come around through chain of custody, they retrieve what was left behind and it's gone.
Thank you very much for that, I appreciate that.
Counselor Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Vehill, for coming out. I guess my question is in lines of job opportunities. When you expand this service as a part of your business, I, I read in your letter that you proposed maybe two to three new job positions. Could you elaborate a little bit on what type of jobs that might be created from this expansion?
We will create a position for a chemist, a biochemist and a microbiologist and a physical science technician.
Okay, and is there an estimated range of salary that that usually?
You know, because of our certification through the, through the federal government and the state, they, based on their experience, they apply the salary amount.
They do?
For the starting.
Okay.
Wages.
And if you could elaborate a, a little bit about how you would dispose of the material as far as not making sure that our water is contaminated improperly or things like that? I read that, a little bit about that in your letter, about how you would make sure that the wastewater operations are okay.
Once the THC is introduced to a solvent or to an acid base and it's consumed, you know, by GCMS, by analysis, and what's left in the column or in the FID detector is burned off. And so any residual water or standards that are made for the process of the, doing the testing, go into a container that contain, that has salts in it, that neutralizes any of the acids, any of the chemicals. It was a City of Alamosa requirement back in 1994 when we created the business, when we started the business. And so it takes any acid and it neutralizes, all of the solution in that tank is basic and it goes out to your lagoons.
Thank you so very much, I appreciate that.
You're certainly welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Vehill. And so with that, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance number three dash 2016? Mr. McCann?
I know Ed Vehill. He's a good man and he would only have a good wife. Anyway, I've never smoked a joint in my life, I never will. That's who and what I am, but I am for medical marijuana. It's been proven over the years, it does help people a lot. And if we're going to have this stuff out there, we want it to be under certain guidelines and done right. And that's what the lab is going to do, so that people get what they expect they're going to get.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number three dash 2016, bring it back to counsel for further discussion or a vote.
Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a few comments and it kind of goes off of what Mr. McCann said. I think this is a, whether you agree with marijuana or not, it's being used and if it's out there, it needs to be safe for folks. So I, I think it's important that we have labs like this that, that will help in that process. And I also, and I also think it speaks volumes that the state of Colorado, the health department has, has approached this lab to, to do this and we have it right in our backyard. They've been around since 1994, so I think they're a proven laboratory and I think they'll do a, a professional and great job at this. Thank you.
Counselor Stefano?
I move that we accept second, the second reading of ordinance number three dash 2016 and allow this testing facility to operate in the Alamosa industrial zone.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second on ordinance number three dash 2016. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please.
The motion carried anonymously.
Thank you, counsel. And thank you, Mrs. Vehill.
Thank you very much.
For being here. And so we will move on to, oh, sorry, Counselor Vehill.
Can I ask a question to staff? What, what will this do for other laboratories that might want to come in and, and do something like this in Alamosa? Do we have any control on that or how would that work?
No, we don't have control over that in the sense that it would be a permitted use in an industrial zone, but the state has control over that. So we're not doing licensing of laboratories, but the state does licensing of laboratories to ensure that they have proper ventilation and other control measures and whatever it is that they need in place.
And, and Eric's first part too is the other key is it has to be appropriately zoned. So the industrial and, and so the, the city does have control on where these types would go, but then the details of the licensing is at the, the state level.
May I just add another, a comment to that? In addition to having a, a facility in the industrial park, DEA and the state have applied strict guidelines for any laboratory, creation of any laboratory. For example, DEA requires that any lab that is going to be testing for marijuana, that the director or the owner has to have a PhD in chemistry. The, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment requires a PhD in chemistry also and also 20 years of practical experience in a laboratory. So it's, you know, they, they'd have to meet those guidelines to be able to come in, so it's not that ea, it's not going to be that easy. You bet.
Thank you for that information.
Sure.
We, we need to move on to committee reports.
Can I make?
Oh, Counselor Daniel.
Ms. Vehill, I just was hoping that you would let us know what the DEA decides so when you determine if your license was approved, your application, so we can celebrate with you.
Absolutely. Sure. So does this mean that we're going to get something in writing so I could forward to? Wonderful, thank you so much, a thousand times.
Absolutely. The passage of ordinance number three dash 2016 fulfills all, all the obligations that you need to continue with your application, Mrs. Vehill. Counsel, let's move on to committee reports, please. Who has a committee report?
Can I just, we'll also make sure to send her a copy, a signed copy of the ordinance so you can, she can have that.
Thank you, Heather, appreciate that. Thank you, Heather. Appreciate that. Seeing no committee reports, we'll move on to staff announcements. Heather?
Um, we do have a few, and, um, Hines, if you want to work your way up, I'll squeeze in a few. Amanda did put at your seat the budget. Um, we spend a lot of time talking about it as far as the line items and if we have anything new and that kind of stuff. What I want to point out to you is this document is the complete document, which means it also includes the goals for the department, for the different departments. It includes the summary for the different funds, those types of items. So there's a lot more information in there than when we're having our work sessions and kind of just going over the numbers. So just want to make sure you're aware of that. When we set our work session, um, for the, kind of the training that Amanda was gonna do, you do want to bring this back because some of the training will refer to the information in the budget document. Hines, if you want to, go ahead.
Sure. Evening, counselors. Um, for you, uh, has the advertising and the promo for the Seventh Annual Rio Freeo Ice Fest, which is coming up in a couple of weekends, last weekend of January. Just wanted to share that with you. You've got an example of the, the poster, a little PSA about what's going on, uh, adding the, the Fremont Haunt Run on Sunday. We still have the, uh, the Foss Snowman, uh, competition, Kiwanis again, as last year, as when they were doing, we were doing Frozen. They participated in the Elsa costume, uh, uh, competition. This year, they're doing the same thing with a meet and greet and costume for the Star Wars theme, also at the Nestle's Toll House. One of the things this year also in the package is the grub and pub. That's being hosted by the Early Iron Club. Basically, you pick up a ticket for 20 bucks, and those, uh, restaurants listed on that flyer, they'll provide you a little grub and a little pub, and, and you can kind of, kind of sampling of their fares from, from one place to the other. Also, uh, with, if conditions permit, we'll have, uh, the San Juan Nordic Club is going to have a Moonlight Ski and Snowshoe along the Rio Grande on Saturday night, uh, January 30th. They're gonna start over there by the, uh, end of Stadium Drive, and end up over at, uh, the, um, Planetarium Observatory, Observatory there for some warm beverages and, uh, cookies. Um, the little flyer, this little one here pretty much details everything over the three days. Uh, most of it's gonna be on Saturday and Sunday. Uh, unlike last year, and even then it was kind of iffy, we, you know, where we had our track for the Rio Freeo, we're gonna be moving it for a little bit further west. Uh, it'll encompass both sides of State, uh, the State Street Bridge. So that'll be a bit of a change there, and we're working with, uh, both, uh, Public Works and PD and, uh, the Fire Department to get everything worked out to make that a safe event.
All right. Just a quick question for you, Hines, and I asked this to you last year. Are we good on the ice? Is it thick enough? Is it safe enough?
Same thing as we did last year. Uh, we're gonna start testing that here, I think, on mu-, start on next Monday. Uh, what we do there, we drill holes in different areas of the ice to make sure it's thick enough to support the weight of all the runners.
And while we don't want people falling in, I think the reminder as well that in most areas, it's, it's not as deep as what some may think, in most areas. So, um, but we do test it, and we want to make sure it's safe, and, and all of that, too.
Yeah. And if you can tell, if you tell this year, if you walk down or look through the river right there, we still have a little bit of an open channel. It closes up right at the curve over there, and it's solid, uh, going westward, so that's why we had to move the, uh, the, uh, the starting start of that, the Rio Freeo and also the Fremont Haunt race.
Thank you, Hines. Um, Counselor Hensley?
I just want to thank you for all your hard work. I know last year being part of Kiwanis, I definitely was involved in it, and it's a lot of fun. And I just think this is, each year that we do this, it just continues to grow, and it's a great, great opportunity for all, everybody of all ages. We have so many different events from everywhere, from kids all the way, obviously, to adults and different interests and things like this. So I just think it appeals to anybody with anything they like to do, and I think this is just a great thing that you've done. So thank you.
Thank you. It's, you know, it's been successful. We do, and this is the seventh one, so it's, it's kind of making a mark for itself. As you tell, it's a Star Wars theme, so there'll be some stuff related to Star Wars. Um, I was told not to tell, so, but I'm going to say that, you know, there will be one, one piece where you can stick your face through as a, for a photo op, and one of them will be a, a get on, just like we had when we had Flintstones, when they had the car there. We're gonna have one, one where you can take, uh, pictures on, be on the ice, I guess, so. And this year, the bonfire again is gonna be on Saturday night at six o'clock. Uh, it's gonna be a little bit taller. We're gonna be a little bit better vented, as we found out from last year when it was a little wet, so, um, it should be spectacular.
Well, and I think what you can see is they're trying to grow the activity, so people have a reason to stick around, visit the, um, the different businesses. And it's surprising, these races, the national statewide attention as well, that these races get. And so it's great that Jeff added that to this event to really make it much more interesting.
And, and follow up on that, yeah, Jeff Owlsley is basically coordinating the racing part of it for both those days. He's on a, a super job. I mean, he's expecting 400-plus, uh, for the Saturday race. So, and we, last year, we had well over 200, I do believe. So it was, there was a lot of people there. So it went over quite well for a first time.
Very good. Thank you, Hines, and, and, and thank, thank you, and Andy, and Jeff, all of you folks over at Parks and Rec. You're doing a great job, uh, especially with this second year, is it?
Seventh.
The seventh?
Seventh.
The seventh year? Wow, this is wonderful, you know, and, uh, a second year for the Rio Freeo though, right? Or third?
Yes, the second year for the Rio Freeo, for the race program. Yes, it is.
It, it's amazing, yeah, how fast time flies when you're having fun, you know, and, and, uh, Tuber was one of my favorite as well. But anyway, thank you so much for that, Hines. Thank you, Chief.
Evening, Mayor, counsel. I just wanted to give you an update on, uh, how quickly we've taken off in 2016. We've been extremely busy, and so I wanted to give you a, an update on some of the activities that we've had as a police department since January 1st. Um, I don't know if you're familiar with the FBI Uniform Crime Reporting Index, a, um, Part One crimes, there's eight of them, that the FBI uses to classify crimes. Um, they're homicide, forcible rape, robbery, burglary, aggravated assault, larceny over $50, motor vehicle theft, and arson. Um, we've reached a lot of these crimes already this year. Um, we haven't had any homicides, thank God. Um, we have, though, have had three forcible rapes reported to us. Um, we've had four robberies, three of which have been armed. Um, we've had 11 burglaries, three residences and eight businesses. We've had two aggravated assaults. We've had three motor vehicle thefts. Um, and we've also assisted in recovering two additional stolen vehicles from outside agencies in Alamosa. Um, and we haven't had any arsons. So our agency, we've been extremely busy since January 1. For it only being January 20th, um, that's a lot of crime. Um, not that Alamosa's unsafe, but we're, there's been a lot of activity in Alamosa. Um, the good thing is, we've solved a lot of these crimes. Um, they don't go unsolved. We work hard. Um, my officers have been extremely busy in the last two weeks. Uh, they've worked a lot of hours. Also, um, we had a SWAT activation. Uh, we assisted another agency in the service of a high-risk warrant. Um, so that, um, in addition to all these investigations, that comes as an additional duty for the majority of our team. So, um, so that leads me into, that's the end of the crime report. Anybody have any questions about that?
In addition to just having a feel for what was going on, I think an appreciation for, some of these crimes can somewhat be challenging, but due to the work of the, the police officers, you guys have been able to track down some leads, solve some of them, and still, for those that haven't maybe been solved yet, have some strong leads. And so there's a lot of good police work that's going on, and, you know, sometimes it may just be 500 or 1,000 that might be stolen. Um, but for that individual or that business, that's, that's a lot of money. And so being able to solve, um, some of these is, is very positive, and it hopefully will, um, prevent them from doing that in the future and make them think twice about doing this stuff in Alamosa, so.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
Counselor Stefano?
Chief, uh, I gotta commend you guys, man. You guys are doing some awesome work. And, uh, we're supposed to have a really good New Year. What a start. Uh, hope it doesn't get any worse, and, uh, I just want to commend you guys for your hard work, and, uh, keep it up. You're doing an awesome job.
Thank you. On top of that, I can, I can tell Heather brought up a good point, that, um, one of the robberies just occurred the other day, and it was an armed robbery. And, uh, less than 24 hours, we identified the two suspects, and, um, we've, we've filed charges, are in the process of filing charges on those, um, those two suspects. And the burglaries, within minutes of, um, six of the burglaries occurring, our officers, uh, were in contact with the suspect. Uh, later that morning, we were able to arrest him, and, and he is in jail as well. So as Heather pointed out, we are, you know, we're not just taking reports, we're out there solving the crimes. Our detectives and even the officers are working hard to identify and follow up on leads, so.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Coleman?
Chief, I too would like to commend you and your staff for the hard work and dedication that you've, uh, apply every day, uh, out there on the, in the, in the field. Um, I want you to continue to do good like you're doing, and let the crooks know that crime does not pay in Alamosa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Hensley?
I just want to add again, what each of the others have said, but also just your presence, uh, yours as well as everybody else on the force, and how much they're out in the public and stuff. I think that makes a huge difference, and I think it's sending, besides that you're protecting us, protecting us all, but also sending a very positive message as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
Chief, we, we had talked a little bit about the amount of overtime because of how hard your officers are working. Um, and so I, I'm absolutely supportive of that. But also, how are they taking care of themselves and utilizing each other? I mean, just thinking about that with all of these, like, Part One crimes and the things, so really making sure that they're also taking care of themselves while they're taking care of all of us, um, and know that that would be supported, um, in lots of different ways, I think.
We make sure that the officers get ample time off. I mean, obviously, when they get called out at, uh, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, they get limited sleep, or when things happen late in their shift, they have to stay over. Uh, we monitor that, make sure that they have the ample support that they need, the sleep, the, um, you know, we can do shift adjusting as we, we can and deem appropriate. So, um, I'm aware, and so is my other command staff, and even the supervisors, they, they watch that and make sure that everybody's eating right, sleeping right, and, you know, um, the majority of us exercise on a routine basis, so that's a huge stress reliever for us.
Thank you for taking care of them that way, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. I, I do have something additional. Um, so one of the things after we got the approval from counsel to move forward with the purchase of vehicles, we started analyzing the black and white, um, vehicle itself. Uh, we realized that the way that Ford is making their vehicles now, it's costing us an additional cost to change, make that second color. So in our case, it'd be white. Um, so we started analyzing that, that cost and, and decided, or looked at the possibility of going to a solid black vehicle. Um, and the, the cost that that would reduce out of each purchase of each vehicle. So what we did with the, the vehicles, they're wrapped with a, I would say almost a sticker, and, um, the new ones from 2000, I think, 10 on, or no, 12 on, um, the new style vehicles, they have that wrap. So we took one of the 15s that we purchased last year, and we wanted to see what it would look like, and, and started playing with the graphic design as well. Our graphics now are black and white. It doesn't, I mean, it's just a dull appearance to the vehicle, especially with the black and white itself. So we designed a, a, a graphics that has some color to it. The blue, um, we took from the Thin Blue line, which is how police officers identify themselves, the brotherhood and sisterhood that we have. And we incorporated that into our design on our graphics. And this is a, the, one of the, the only one that we've done so far, but this is what our brand-new ones will look like in 16. Um, we got this accomplished today. Um, so what we did, and if you know our old picture, we lowered the mountains, we kept the city of Alamosa identified, we changed the color from black and white to blue, and on top of that, these are all, um, reflective. So it improves the safety of our officers as well. So when there's, there's lighting at night, there, um, it's just like a reflective sticker. So it makes us more visible on the street as well. So we incorporated the safety aspects to it as well. Um, but I wanted to bring this to you and show you what our new vehicles are gonna look like and what we're looking at doing, and how we did save the city a little bit of money.
Chief, are these, uh, reflective appliques? Is that what they are, or is that just actual paint?
No, they're, they're stickers.
Yeah.
Extreme Graphics do, does our graphics for us.
Sure.
Um, so Dennis brings in whatever product he has and, and cuts everything, customizes it, and prints it out, and then applies it to the vehicle.
I, I think that's really positive, because not only are we cutting down on the cost, but if anything happens to any of these applications, just remove them and just replace them, correct?
That's correct. And that's one of the reasons we started looking at this, too, is with that wrap, as cold as we get, or when it's warm, if you get a door ding, it doesn't just ding it, it, it tears that, that wrap. Um, so we started having holes in some of the white and the black coming through. And, um, so the appearance of the police cars that were, we currently have, even the brand-new ones from last year, um, they appear worn and abused. When it's just the wrap itself, it's not any abuse to the
Is Adam, uh, uh, sorry. Uh, Counselor Hensley?
I was just gonna add, I think it looks very sharp, and I think it also adds to the branding of Alamosa, uh, as far as marketing, branding, adding to that whole, uh, way we're trying to promote Alamosa. So besides being protective and doing the things that it's doing, it also adds to that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it looks good, and it saves money. So it's great.
Counselor Stefano?
They look kind of mean, Chief.
They look mean?
They really, they really look good. Uh, my question is, uh, visibility, uh, is it gonna affect, uh, people approaching your vehicles, uh, in the dark, like in the dark? Uh, is it gonna, of course, you, you said they're, you're gonna be able to, uh, they're like, uh, I forget the word, reflective at night?
They are reflective at night, will be more, more visible to, uh, passing vehicles and things like that. Um, as far as aggressiveness, the black and white vehicle is the traditional police vehicle, and, and, um, people view that as more aggressive and, and more, um, demanding power, I would say. But the, the solid black vehicle, it looks like a regular car. Um, I think they're gonna be more approachable.
I think they'll be a lot more effective than the black and white, because, uh, the black and white's been out in police departments for a long time, and, yeah, it's kind of a status quo thing, you know, but they look great. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Chief, when do you expect, uh, the entire fleet to be color-coordinated?
Um, well, I, I don't plan on changing the old vehicles, just the ones that have the wrap on them. Um, so as we phase out the older vehicles, it'll go away. And that's why we wanted to, to stay with the similar theme. I mean, there's black and white, and then there's the color, so there's gonna be a difference, but the theme itself is the same.
I noticed that Adam State University is also, seems like they're following suit or have kind of the same thing?
That's one of the things that the chief from Adam State brought from Florida was, um, he wanted to bring a new look to the, their department. Um, I had a concern with that as well, that we would look similar to them. Um, but with our graphics design, there is gonna be a distinct, a distinct, uh, difference between the two. And plus, we put our patch on the side, uh, which identifies, you know, our police department. Um, I don't have any concern with the confusion of the two vehicles.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Good news.
Thank you.
So as Pat makes his way up, um, we do know, we still need to reschedule the ribbon cutting for the glass crusher. That is still gonna happen. He's gonna identify a few dates, send it out to you guys so we can, um, figure out what works best. But then he also has an update on, um, some solar power items, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, as a couple of you at least know about, we've, uh, had an opportunity to look into something called, uh, Green Energy Collective. They had a, they had a lunch and learn today that we attended. Um, on the surface, what it is, it, it essentially allows us to purchase electricity at a reduced rate with a long-term purchase commitment from them. So we could potentially, we could potentially realize lower electricity costs for the city and reduce our carbon footprint at the same time. Uh, we'll, we'll keep looking into that, chasing references, doing things like that, make sure everything, everything is gonna work. But that's, that's some potential good news. And one other thing, we've been in discussions with Excel. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we had some discussions about converting the city, uh, streetlights to LED. Um, Excel is now moving in that direction. So they've, they've sent us a proposal for a couple of different options that the city can take advantage of. It won't be all of the lights in town, it'll be about 275, um, 'cause they're only doing the Cobra Head-style- the Cobra Head-style lights right now, but it's a move in the right direction, and we'll, we'll get that program figured out, and we'll come to you with recommendation.
Mayor? Pat, I have one quick question. You might not know this right now, but do you know ballpark, the savings on that, LED lights?
There's, there's two different options. One where Excel will come in and change the lights, change the fixtures at their own cost. That savings, according to their estimates, is about $2,300 a year, that it'll save us in electric costs. If we pay the upfront cost of the light change, it looks like it's going to cost about $80,000 to do that, but it moves our savings from two to over $8,000 a year, so we can, you know, potentially look at a 10- to 12-year payout, and then realize the greater savings. So we'll, we'll run those numbers and go through it with Amanda and see what she thinks.
Thank you, Pat.
And then the last update?
We'll, of course, look into that, but what I'm actually up here to talk about is the auction site.
I think we're back on right now, yeah. Thank you, Jim.
My key walks into the room, and it works. The auction site on our website is back online. As councils are aware, we had some problems in the transition, and versions of that, that's back online now. I want to call attention to that. We're currently running auctions on that site full-time. There's some older police cars that are being sold right now, and the city is about to do its annual sell-off of computer systems, so public's free to bid on that, and they try to at thecityvalamosa.org.
I also want to comment, as we're talking about the sound. I know the last few meetings, the last one, I think, went well, but the ones before, we've had some on-and-off situations with sound. IT has been working on it, we kind of thought we had it fixed, but for council to kind of have an understanding, the last time we looked at sound, it was around 75,000, so we want to make sure we're getting everything we can out of this system, but if we continue to have some issues, it's obviously something we'll need to look at again, but it may not be a cheap fix, and so that's why we want to make sure if we can fix it in-house, that we try those methods, but if not, we may need to look at some other items as well.
And we've already had the original vendor in to look at the system, and they're, they're kind of throwing up their hands, saying they're not quite sure what's going on with it, but we'll continue to look into it.
Thank you, Jim. Counselor Stefano?
I just want to thank you, Jim, your IT team. IT is a lot of work, man. You guys got to maintain all the fiber optics and everything for the city, the police department. You're kind of in the background, but we just, I just want you to know that your work is really appreciated, okay? It's a lot of work.
I too, Jim. Thank you very much. 191 is the place to be right now for, you know, for a lot of people. Used to be the old Channel 10, but people still, you know, they still like it, and I enjoy it periodically. Not that I like to see myself on TV, but it doesn't really hurt, you know? Anyway, it's good to see and kind of refresh your memories to what really happened at your meeting. Thank you very much for that, Jim. Appreciate your hard work on that.
Thank you.
All right. Counsel, we'll move on from staff announcements if Heather's done, and we will move on to council comment. Do we have any council comments?
I have one, Mayor. Last night, I attended the Ortega Middle School, their board meeting, and I took, I was an alternate for Jan, who was playing a basketball game in Salida. I just want to kind of clue you in, they're doing some awesome work with the kids, and I was really impressed with the productions that they're putting on, on their shows, like stage shows and other productions, that they're doing a really great job, and we got to commend the teachers there that are really doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Daniel?
I just wanted to thank the team for the retreat we had. I think it was very well put together, and I really appreciated all the information and time everyone spent with us going through a lot of information, and I just wanted to make an announcement, that TriStar Basketball, which is a skills competition for 8- to 13-year-olds, boys and girls, is this Saturday at the rec center, so if you know any young children who like to play basketball, send them our way. It's totally free for them to join.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Seeing no further council comments, I will just make an observation, Pat. If you have an opportunity out at night, it seems like some of the nightlights or streetlights, lamps are out near the Walmart on the west side of Clark Street near Del Sol. It looks like two or three of them are out, I'm not really sure. You might just check on that, Pat, and see if I'm, maybe they're just intermittent, I'm not really sure. Thank you for that, Pat. Appreciate that. And seeing no one else, I will adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned.